We'll be waiting. Just for a reminder that the Special Access Committee is examining and will report back to the Parliament on access matters, and in particular, issues of access by air and by sea, including ferry service, cargo, docking during rough seas, relevant regulations, and relevant regulations regarding the airport facilities, aircraft types, and the challenges as well that confronts Muntzrat at St. Patrick's and Christmas festivals. Our housekeeping rules are these proceedings are recorded and forms part of the transcripts and records of reports, and we have been broadcasting live on Radio Muntzrat and through social media platforms. We ask that you speak clearly. The committee will ask questions and invite witnesses to clarify questions if necessary. Witnesses, you two, may clarify a question if you're not quite sure. We are not here to answer questions. However, if there's a question you wish to ask, we will recall this and seek an answer, where it advances the work and the purpose of the committee. Witnesses and organizations may be asked to provide documentation or further information to assist the work of the committee. Witnesses may also refer to their legal attorney for advice or their institutions for advice on answering questions. However, we wish to reiterate that this is a parliamentary committee, and therefore, as a parliamentary committee, we expect that you will answer truthfully and you'll give us the information that is required. But like I said, if you need to refer back to base, that we will allow that, and then we'll make a decision with going forward. We also reserve the right to recall witnesses and request further information in its various forms. So this morning, we have, and you will correct me if, we have Mrs. Daphne Castle, and you are the PS in the Premier's Office with responsibility as well for access, where you'll tell us that, and Mr. Lindsay, Asher Lindsay, is also here with us. And what we can do is we will ask you some questions if you want him to answer at the same time, or I'm not sure how you wish to do your presentation, or he may introduce himself and give his qualifications, a background that we will require, which you determine. But we will start with you, Mrs. Castle. Okay, so Mrs. Castle, good morning again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Access Division Office of the Premier, we are pleased to engage with you. We do have a short presentation to provide the background of our core functions and responsibilities.
We welcome that. But for the record, your name?
I'm Daphne Castle.
Okay. And you would therefore be giving us your purpose, et cetera, in your presentation, so we'll allow you to flow this morning like that, okay? But we may intervene if needs be.
So the Access Coordinator will commence the presentation, and then I'll conclude.
Good morning to the Access Special Committee colleagues and the listening public. Being minded of the time allocated for this presentation, we request that questions and comments be reserved until the end to aid with the flow and expediency.
I appreciate that, but at this committee, we set the rules, and if we deem it necessary, we will intervene, because at times, we do need to intervene to get the clarity before we move on. So I appreciate you would like it to flow like that, but I also wanted to be mindful of how we conduct our proceedings. Thank you.
Understood. The Access Division Office of the Premier is here today to provide salient points pertaining to travel facilitation, to travel facilitation to and from Muntzrat. Our current operations, the Access Division has staffing of two, the Access Coordinator, which is myself, who started in March 2017, the Access Assistant from July 2020, and supported by the current PS, Mrs. Daphne Castle, from January 2018. The access function currently supported by monthly cargo service. We are, we also implemented an airline ticket subsidy of $170 per single journey during non-peak months from mid-June to the end of October 2023. Along with monthly operational support to Islander Air Services, which entails at least one flight a day with a minimum of three flights per week, plus on-call medivac services, services, and a number of other services. We are currently working on implementing a short-term passenger ferry service for peak months of 2023 and 2024. For our cargo movements, we are, we will just share some data that relates to a number of customers or importers from November 2021 to August of 2023. The service has shown very good potential over the period thus far, and we continually receive feedback on the performance of the service from our customers. Budget spent and total passenger movement. A snapshot is being provided on the correlation between budget assigned for access to facilitate travel, the number of passenger movements, which also results in visitor spend and sizable return on investment. As can be seen, there is a direct correlation between the size of the budget, the access revenue, and the total number of persons who travel. Our current realities, on the sea transport, we have bimonthly cargo, cargo trips. Bimonthly, twice monthly, yeah. We also have a number of ferry, we had no passenger ferry services since April of 2023. There's a supplemental budget allocation earmarked for implementation of a peak-time ferry service. And on the air transport, there's monthly operational support to Islander Airlines for a minimum of three days per week based on demand. There's also airline, there's also an airline ticket subsidy from June 15, 2023 to October 31, 2023, and this is to ease the cost of travel by air. There is no additional airlift by any medium-sized aircrafts. I will now provide some customer feedback and consequences based on the services provided to date. This information outlines the realities which can be used to guide policy and the political, and the political directorate to design the solution. There has been poor travel facilitation to our destination, and that is no through-ticketing and luggage delays on the non-arrivals. There was also late confirmation that there will be no ferry service for the December 2022, which resulted in mass cancellation of travel for Festival 60. We had like families of 10, families of 15, and others who had to cancel their trips. Bookings for international travel are done early, between three and six months prior to securing, to so that they could secure cheaper fares coming from the international community. No indication of transport arrangements in place for St. Patrick's Festival in March 2023, and there was significant hesitancy and lack of traveler confidence due to that. With the existing arrangements in place, a traveler to Muntzrat is unable to access through-ticketing or to arrange travel via online travel agents such as booking.com, Travel Advisor, et cetera. Travel facilitation is relatively poor and therefore needs to be improved. This is further compounded by the unavailability of flights and the inadequate baggage capacity. Travelers have, haven't had to overnight in Antigua for periods of three to five days, with multiple visits to the airport after arrival to secure luggage, sometimes up to three days after arrival. Muntzrat is unable to maximize on its post-pandemic interests now that the borders have reopened. It is just too expensive to travel to Muntzrat, therefore highlighting the cost of an eight-hour flight from the UK versus the cost of a 20-minute flight from Antigua. The additional inconvenience just mentioned makes Muntzrat unattractive compared to other neighboring islands. Our journey to the solution. Prior to the dissemination of the WH Bramble Airport in June of 1997, the primary mode of trans, travel to Muntzrat was via air. Thereafter, based on the circumstances, helicopter, ferry, and fixed-wing services catered to travel, to the travel demand. As shown, there has been four main consultancies which were commissioned for access. There are others who considered access also, but are not listed here today. There has been the Hippolyte Report in 2011, the Bob Nuke's Kofi Report in 2013, the Kofi Review Report in 2017, the Access Strategy by Akila Aviation in 2019, and Access Strategies Developed, all consistently indicated the required combination of air and sea transportation equipment, especially during peak periods. With the arrival of the Access Strategy in 20, in May 2019, the Office of the Premier has prepared a number of implementation plans to return to a reasonable-sized budget for access to ensure supply of adequate and consistent transport capacity by air and sea. I will now hand you over to PS Daphne Castle of Office of the Premier. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and good morning, Special Committee, listeners online and in person. And to continue our presentation, the main mandate for the Access Division within the Office of the Premier is for us to work with service providers. These would be airlines and ferry operators at this time of development of Muntzrat to achieve the goal of safe, reliable, affordable, and efficient travel to and from Muntzrat into the medium term. And so we have determined three key strategic imperatives to accomplish this goal. One, a three-to-five-year commitment of funding that will allow the requisite lead time for securing marketing and implementing transport services.
Sorry, could you kindly repeat that, please?
Three-to-five-year commitment of funding that allows the requisite lead time, because typically for air transport, the lead time is six to nine months, sometimes 12 months, and on the sea transport, nine to 12 months, perhaps even 18 months. With framework agreements in place, this is a procuring initiative that allows the prequalification of operators, then the procurement cycle could be shortened, and so we think six to nine months in those instances would be realistic. The additional consideration going on is to work closer with the private sector, perhaps through public-private partnerships with the operators and airlines, which is the shift from the fully dedicated contracted service that we would have had with the ferry to provide operational support or other fiscal incentives where the private sector would deliver end-to-end transport service at an agreed level with the government of Muntzrat. The service provider in these instances would have the flexibility to operate other routes and provide other services, of course, to improve the commercial viability. We all acknowledge that transport services require sizable investments, and this is expected to resolve, result in affordable fares and an overall reduced cost to the government of Muntzrat. We shared earlier the budgets for 17, 18, 18, 19, and 19, 20 to the current. And as the various consultancies and professional studies have consistently revealed to serve the Muntzrat destination, we need that optimal combination of vessels and aircrafts that are going to allow the frequency, the type of operation, whether scheduled or chartered operations, to meet the travel demand to Muntzrat as a tourist destination and to meet that demand consistently. So in order to leverage the access potential for Muntzrat, we reemphasize the combination of air and sea transport modes. And this is about securing passenger ferry services that respond to the various market segments and travel demographics for the regular Muntzrat to Antigua route, day-and-weekend excursions, peak demand primarily during the months of November, December, and February into mid-April, particularly March, connectivity with other neighboring islands, and cargo, cargo capability. In terms of air transport, it's to operationalize a combination of small and larger aircraft operations for daily schedule services to our nearest international gateway, Antigua, charters, medivac, courier, gateway expansion to neighboring islands of Guadalupe and Neves for the small aircrafts, and St. Martin and St. Kitts for larger aircrafts. Overall, the intention is to increase the number of seats, seats availability via multiple international gateways, improved baggage capacity, and air cargo and courier packages capability. So consistent with the professional recommendations and the stay towards the policy is passenger services, ferry services, and aircraft operations, both small and larger aircraft. And we've outlined a number of benefits and impact which I'll highlight. Increased airlift capacity with access to new source markets via the international gateways means more visitors to Muntzrat for business, vacation, festivals. It also means opportunities to access a wider range of goods and services where we've expanded the transport modalities. Ease of travel. Through-ticketing and interline arrangements from the long-haul destinations, the United Kingdom, the USA, after eight or three hours' flight, it'd be more customer-friendly to relax in the in-transit facility, and then a 20-minute flight rather than the current situation with queues, immigration, collecting your luggage, clearing customs, and then check-in for airline and departure processing. The other impact we'd like to highlight is that having the correct, the, that optimal mix of transport modalities, this allows us to unlock the, unlock the port's infrastructure and tourism investments, particularly those sizable investments in more recent time. I refer specifically to the runway improvements, the building, construction of a new control tower, and we are now on the way with seaport development. Similarly, in the tourism sector, there's been a number of improvements in our products, the beach amenities, hiking trails, industry training, and our commitment to construct and operationalize a volcano interpretation center. We've reinstated the subsea fiber connection. We have fiber to the premises, 97% of households and businesses. We've invested in remote working tourism, and of course, festivals, the like. So in order to benefit from these investments, we need to attract a large number of persons traveling to Muntzrat with minimal hassle. The strategy focus and access potential also allows for contingency arrangements. We must acknowledge our existing seaport and airport infrastructure limitations, and so the utilization of both transport modes, various vessels and aircraft types. This gives us that strong arrangement for adequate supply and consistent availability, and we've had a number of lessons to be learned, why it's important to have contingency plans in place. We, we normally experience our rough seas during the peak time, November to March. We had the COVID-19 global pandemic with travel restrictions at our international gateways, and we also are aware of the operational issues experienced by the Islander Airlines. So essentially, it's our mantra, we would want to leverage the potential of the visitor economy to return now post-COVID and exceed our 2018 and 2019 levels, where the stayover visitor spend had been quantified in the order of 27 million per annum, and really to create those socioeconomic spinoffs. And, and so essentially, we recognize the possibilities and opportunities, and to reemphasize investments in access and connectivity, it unlocks the socioeconomic potential of Muntzrat. And where I had just indicated, in addition to maximizing the airport-seaport infrastructure and the investments in tourism, be it our festivals, Calabashia and St. Patrick's, which creates such a boost in our economy, business and employment activity in areas where taxi and tour operators, entertainment, beach maintenance, amenities, the botanical garden trees, heritage activities, and of course, increased tax revenue for government, and where we see government, mainstream government, statutory bodies like the Port Authority. It also boosts the agricultural sector. Visitors enjoy our Muntzrat cuisine, and this spawns increased local production, poultry, livestock, crops, weather, fruits, and vegetables. And we just highlight an additional opportunity that improved intercontinental and regional links will definitely improve the attractiveness for doing business, for leisure travel, and for trade for Muntzrat. And so that is the extent of our presentation to provide an overview of the remit of the Access Division Office of the Premier. Thank you.
Thank you very much, PS Castle. Is it okay which one you want to be called? PS Castle, Mrs. Castle? You know, I move between both. PS, let me call PS, I'll say PS, I'll leave it there. Just PS would be fine, okay? Just for our records. One of my documents. We have, you have shared with us a number of documents, one such, and you will, you will give me the correct name for this one. SRS, Transportation Services for Muntzrat, the Suntanja Strategy? Would you say that? We want to be correct when we're referring to the documents. How would you describe this document? What would you call it?
We would refer to it as, we would refer to it as the strategy document, but includes our implementation plan and to reemphasize one of the imperatives, the three-to-five-year more medium-term commitment to funding and the desired outcomes.
We had a question regarding, there is no policy that allows operators or persons who are interested in access to plan carefully or plan, plan, plan their, their business. What document would you say can assist them, if any? And they referred to it as a policy, that was what the, the witness referred to it as. Would you think that this would be able to assist them, or we're going to go through this with you? Or do we need, or do you have a, a policy? What do you share with, with operators so that they can plan, they can plan to invest in their businesses in Muntzrat? Those persons who you see as your stakeholders?
So the, in our presentation, we referred to the strategies and the more recent one, which was approved in May 2019, that outlines the high-level implementation plan, and then this document that you're referring to would be the Access Division now operationalizing that policy. Of course, we are minded of the COVID intervention, and you would see the trajectory whereas we had a consistent funding in the order of eight to nine million, that, that had dwindled naturally because of the fall-off in travel demand, and so we are at the point of rebuilding. And this is where the strategic imperative, we now need to have that three-to-five-year engaging with the operators and our other internal and external stakeholders, we can have that more medium-term planning, as opposed to the annual, an annual occurrence. And we did allude to the lead time in the transport industry to secure equipment, crew, and, and your operations. So we do acknowledge the need to have that clearly cemented.
Can I clarify? Are you agreeing that we may need some documentation that is access user-friendly for operators to allow them to plan, given that question came up?
Understood. Yes, there is need for some guidance in terms of documentation, but what we found is within the last five years, because of the dynamics of access and how it changes, and it changes quite rapidly, and has changed quite rapidly over the last five years, what we do, we use the policy documents that we have to use the access function to guide the persons that are interested in starting their business here in access. So what we do have is an open-door policy, so people can contact us directly, and depending on what's happening on the ground at the time. And depending on what's happening on the ground at the time, then we give the necessary guidance and indication as to what can be done, how it can be done, and who they are supposed to contact in order to get what they need to get done.
Yo, okay, P S?
Sorry, and may I add on the last point? That currently, it's with the Policy Directorate, we've been asked to provide a comprehensive analysis of all of the options for air and sea transportation. And so that is expected to be presented early, early in October. And so this, Madam Chair, would also support that requirement, having had the confirmation now going forward that we would have a clear guidance, medium term, for our service providers.
Walking meaning physically and virtually? You spoke about the walking service. Is that, is that a comprehensive service that involves walking off the street as well as virtual walking in? Do you have that?
Yes, that's correct. I do speak to quite a lot of people within the region, locally as well. So yes, they can either contact me via email, they can call direct, they could come into the office, or even on my personal mobile. Thank you.
You refer to a number of documents. We don't have those consultancies. We have with us the Aquila Aviation Limited document, that one we have, which you may refer you to. We are also given the Monstrat Tourism Strategy as well. Thank you for those. We wish to note those in our records. And the review of Strategy for Sea and Access, February twenty seventeen, is that the correct one? Yes? And I have with me, I'll let you know what I have, the budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, which refers to access on page fifteen. Yes? And although, and I said this carefully, we started our journey for Sustainable Development Plan in two thousand and eight. We know that recently, there was some review, some things have happened. But it has highlighted as one of the vision pillars, adequate and affordable transportation links to and from Monstrat, which we today call access. So from that, as early as that, and I'm sure before, access is a critical pillar. And in the reports which we will speak to, they have highlighted the importance of access. Yes, just for the grandeur. I will allow, having said that, the other members of the committee to come in at this time, and we alternate, we go as we deem necessary.
P S Castle, good morning. Good morning to you and those listening to us by radio and otherwise. I wanted to ask something of what you said last. Did you say that there is some sort of a study being done to determine the preferred mode of air access? Did you say something of that nature? By government or is it the one done by the governor?
No, I did not make mention of that study.
No? What did you, what did you mention? I meant to ask immediately, but...
Oh, right. So we are looking at the options for transportation by air and sea. Because we benefited, as we outlined, from a number of studies.
Okay.
And this is going to be tabled again as we move out of the post-COVID era and to have some firm policy, guidance and direction.
Okay, my next question is a very simple one. Considering the COVID challenges we faced and the way it's changed our circumstances and a few other matters which we will discuss as we go along, would you say that this document published in November ten is probably our best guide in looking at where you're going forward? Your implementation plans or your strategies going forward? Should I use this as more of a basis than anything else?
This can be utilized, but we're minded that each year we make representation as part of the financial aid mission. And so we present updated documentation, which the Access Coordinator referred to. But this gives a good guide. The premise still remains that optimal combination of A and C with the adequate level of resourcing within the infrastructure that we have bought at the seaport and at the airport.
Thank you. I don't know if I should go directly into the question. On the signed document referred to, November ten, twenty twenty-one, Transportation Services for Monstrat, Knocking Monstrat Socioeconomic Potential, I notice upfront that you emphasize on the air transport services that twin auto operations will therefore be the leading focus for government of Monstrat based on the performance capability of the aircraft. And the other advantage is outlined in this document. I'd like to know whether that is still your focus, your primary focus, as far as air access?
So you referenced the document of November twenty twenty-one, and this was based on the approval of the Access Strategy in May twenty nineteen, which outlined that for ferry services, an operating structure based on a government-owned vessel, which could have been a purchase or a lease purchase with a separate management contract, and for air services, options to introduce twin auto services within the strategy implementation period. And so the Aquila Aviation Strategy was that five-year period, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. So certainly, this document that we produced in November twenty twenty-one, we've had updated annually, but was premised on the policy approval and the access strategy defined.
Is it fair to say that the FCDU supports the direction government of Monstrat is taking or has taken on this as far as EMC access, as far as focusing on twin autos and acquiring a ferry? Is it fair to say that you have the support of DIFID in this direction?
I can only say it's fair to say that FCDU has always been receptive to our presentation and justification, access, health, education, the full gamut.
As far as I recall myself, prior to COVID, you would have had the support of DIFID in those decisions as far as focusing on a twin auto and also on purchasing and owning a ferry, as far as I remember. I know things may have changed a bit, but I just want to be sure that that is still something being considered.
Well, in our preamble, we spoke to that presentation in October. So we would wait for that firm guidance emerging from that submission. But of course, those presentations would take into consideration our journey to this point, you know, with the fall off from April twenty twenty.
Can you tell us what your main challenges as far as implementing the ambitious plans that we've had over EMC access? Could you tell me what those main challenges have been apart from COVID?
Okay, the main challenge that we would highlight relates to that medium-term commitment of funding. And I'm sure you're well aware that in eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, we did have a ring-fenced access budget allocation in the order of five point four million. Of course, from the information we presented, you would have seen how that had fallen off to two point two into three million, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, because of the same imperative around securing equipment. So whether it's a ferry or an aircraft, that you would need to have the budget commitment into the long term so that you can also partner with service providers, be it for two years, three years or two plus one. So the challenge is around the budgeting and allowing us to plan and securing the agreements with the service providers, be it that it's going to be GOM-led contracted or as another option, a public-private partnership. You would need to have that commitment of funding.
I see on your page three...
Yes, yes.
...where you speak to, it is, first of all, your executive summary states clearly from the outset, access play, we're referring to the safe, reliable, sustainable transport, transportation services for Monstrat document. Okay, I can refer to the strategic document? Yes, all right. From the outset, you highlight access plays an integral role in every country's development agenda. And that includes Monstrat. And you've shared with us the objectives of the approved sea and access and connectivity strategy that you wish to leverage. Okay, you have also shared in paragraph three, the reintroduction of twin auto aircraft operations will not only strengthen connectivity links with the international community, but will also afford access to Monstrat from several neighboring gateways. We're going to ask you to share a little bit more about those possibilities. And similarly, the resumption of passenger ferry operations will connect Monstrat with the regional and international tourist marketplaces. Integrating Monstrat into the air and sea transportation sectors in the Caribbean and the world will significantly improve the visitor economy and jumpstart private sector development, particularly in the post-COVID nineteen pandemic era, which we are now in. Is that a correct representation of what you have here?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And do you still share this vision or this hope? Do you still share that?
So in broad terms, we do share this vision, but we're minded that the Access Division, we represent the arm of government that would engage with potential service providers. And we work within the approvals and certifications from the port authorities, so be it the Seaport, the Monstrat Maritime Administration, the Monstrat Port Authority, and of course, the Airport Authority.
The following paragraph reads, "From a macroeconomic standpoint, it is critical that the funding of approximately fifteen point six seven million EC dollars for this three-year cycle be secured with an allocation of four point eight two million in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal period. This investment in access is intended to realize returns on the strategic investments in airport infrastructure, tourism sector, digital connectivity, private sector assets, and very importantly, the immediate socioeconomic spinoffs." Is that amount at this point in time still what you think is necessary?
In the approximate order for a three-year cycle could be with increases in costs some two years later, but in that general order for a three-year period.
Okay, and your summary also highlights that it is therefore wise, a wise idea that the government of Monstrat and the Foreign and Commonwealth Development Office, FCDU, adopt a multi-gateway approach for our air access strategy and embark on building our local connections with our neighbors using sea access. These two strategic transportation modalities are critical to building our economy and ensuring a more sustainable and economically viable future for Monstrat. This is the access platform vision? Yes, correct? As you have shared, to carry forward this, it is very important that the allocations are made. We saw, and you have given evidence to that, the challenges that our visitors face during Christmas time and the St. Patrick's Festival. And you have also highlighted the importance of being able to build customer confidence in the transportation system or access in and out of Monstrat. Can this committee therefore take it that for you to achieve these finances critical ahead of time to allow you to explore and put in place what is necessary? Because you speak of in another document, commitment, that commitment. And I will, I will go to the document and it takes us back to page fifteen of our Government of Monstrat Budget Statement twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Building a Stronger Monstrat Together: A Vision and Roadmap for Prosperity. And it speaks to, let me make sure I have my page right. "I am pleased to report, Madam Speaker, that after navigating turbulent waves in March twenty twenty-three, this government secured a ferry service to support the St. Patrick's Festival period. We remain committed, Madam Speaker, to do all in our power to ensure that the traveling public are able to access the island." And that's the short paragraph regarding access.
That's budget year?
Clearly, budget year, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. All right? And we will not restrict it to that because other words would have been used. But we're speaking of what I want to get to the point about is the commitment of government to advance the access strategy. Where are we with that in terms of finances? The committee needs to know because it impacts all of the wonderful ideas that you have. And I will ask you to explore a little more because you talk about all these neighboring islands. We need to know what neighboring islands you are talking about and how we are going to get people to and from them, and what is necessary to put those in place. And I can also give you an avenue as well to explain because quite often, persons at this point, as you say, three to six months lead time to book flights, and we will blame access for not having. We need to know whether we're going to have a ferry, we need to know what air services we are going to have. How, explain to the public and to us, the committee, because they're listening. It's very important for the committee. What is required? How do you plan? What challenges you face? What, when you want to procure a ferry from Munsirat, ferry service, what has to happen? And then you can take us to the commitment and the necessity of that commitment that allows you to get what you want to achieve, the strategy that you have outlined here for us.
So in terms of securing, as we suggested, operations with a ferry operator, given the size of the contract, we have to engage in what is referred to as open market engagement. So these we would publish invitations to tender. Yes, I'm doing that, so. Exactly. So potential ferry operators would have to formally submit their interest, submit a bid. And that goes through the process of meeting all of the certification requirements, having the appropriate equipment, which is a ferry, that would respond to navigating our waters on the primary route, which is from Munsirat to Antigua. Those bids would be evaluated for, based on the criteria as published, these are public documents and a recommendation made to the Public Procurement Board. In our presentation, we would have outlined procuring a ferry. This can take upwards of nine to twelve months. You would imagine operators with a ferry, in some instances, actually it was like three hundred and sixty seater, a two hundred-plus seater. This is an asset that not necessarily will be sitting idle. So they would have to be able to respond and provide that vessel along with fully certified crew to suit the timing of Munsirat. So we have all of those logistics to deal with. Hence, our foundational premise, a commitment, as had been in the past, three to five years, that we have a budget allocation of, let's say, six million per year for the next three years so that even when we go out to the market, we can be asking for a more longer-term service so that is even beneficial to the operator for a year rather than a month, as we had done earlier this year for a March-April thirty-day service, to ask someone to mobilize and demobilize that asset, which would have been assigned to another route or in use for another purpose. So here, the longer-term commitment of resourcing, which we had pre-COVID, that was the situation. So what that meant is that, pre-COVID, we knew that we had five point four million ring fence for access for the provision of having aircrafts coming here and a passenger ferry service as determined. The combination of whether you're going to have it just during the peak time for the ferry and air service, a combination of small and bigger-sized aircrafts throughout the year. But we knew what our budget commitment is so that we can plan. And as you mentioned at the very beginning, to indicate to the airlines or other service providers what our plans are. Because as you've seen, documented on paper, they are the plans, but then this now has to be matched with the requisite resourcing funding and to be able to engage the market and to get a positive response. And so some of the practical realities are, for example, without getting into the specifics of the ongoing procurement for the upcoming peak period, is that we would have shared the procurement unit, our bid to twenty-five-plus ferry operators across the region. Twenty-five-plus, was it actually? Twenty-five-plus. And we would have had a response of only two bids in that recently concluded procurement exercise in early August. That's correct. So Ashley, did you want to pick up in terms of the possibilities connecting with some of the neighboring gateways?
So before you do that, may I just ask a question of the peers? I don't know if this is the business case for the twenty twenty to twenty-three business year, which were now, well, sorry, just passed. It was said that the FCDO and the Access Division are constantly in discussion over the appropriate year access to begin. And also, no, no, let me get it straight, about the Government of Munsirat about its plans for access improvement, including a move to a different commercially viable airline model and a potential seasonal approach to ferry services. So I just want to be clear whether you're speaking of a seasonal approach or for a full-year approach. Is that what you're seeking to achieve or not? In, you know, in answer to the question asked by the peer, the minister. I'm sorry, Honorable Doss, the chair, yes.
The, I think the overarching is about being able to respond to the travel demand. Naturally, during the peak time, we have increased traffic. The seasonal approach, it depends on the modality. If you have the private sector operating a ferry, end-to-end services, they're collecting the passenger revenue. Our calculations would suggest a significantly reduced outlay from the Government of Munsirat. Vis a vis, the government-led operation, which you're seeing the budgets heavily cost-intensive, where we contract the service, it's primarily on the Antigua-Munsirat route. We cover all of the costs for fuel, agency, and other auxiliary support services. So the modality, as you're asking, Honorable Romeo, whether seasonal or full service, it also depends on the relationship, the procurement relationship we have for delivering the service.
Forgive me, I, I am, what I'm asking is your focus on seasonal or on yearly provision of sea access? By contract or whatever? Which is it? Because it makes a big difference for us in, you know, you're asking or you're speaking of what commitment you're seeking from the because they're saying that in discussion with you over seasonal, potential seasonal approach to ferry services. So I just want to be clear.
I don't want to speak out of context, as I said, just looming, but it would have been year-round, as we had suggested. But there's the shift for the public-private, which could be year-round. And if it were to continue government-led, given the costs, then it could be seasonal. But as I said, we are just at the point of reviewing the journey, where we've come from, where we are now emerging post-COVID. And so that, as you're saying, is very important to have that firm indication. And so in engaging with you, we are highlighting, as it were, the pros and cons of those options.
Sure, no problem. Part of my, my job is to do a lot of transport market research and to see how best, yes, part of my job is to do a lot of transport research and to see how best Munsirat, as an island and as an economy, can better integrate not only with its neighbors but further feel to the international markets. Now, we've, we've done transport to and from Munsirat for quite a number of years. And it has worked for us because it has kept us alive. But as COVID came in and everything did, we found, I found that it was the perfect opportunity for us to start looking at a blank slate in terms of reconnecting the Munsirat economy with the international markets. Now, COVID highlighted that if we do not start working together as neighbors, that some of us will excel and others will be crushed or be non-existent or be not noticed. Now, we saw that through the feedback that I got from the Antigua-Barbuda, Senkitz-Nevus, Guadeloupe, Dominica, all of these countries that are Saint Martin, which are close to us, and how they struggled to recover their access transport systems. They all recognized that they had to start working together in order to survive the after-effects of COVID. And we have to do the same. In order for us to be a part of what is now going to become a global movement to, for sustainability of economies, we have to connect ourselves significantly with the international or the global economy. And that means that we have to connect it through transport. It means the movement of people and the movement of revenue. That's what that means. So in the region, we have to start small. We're not big enough that we have the funding that we could go directly to the larger economies and integrate with them. So we have to start within our current region, which is Antigua-Barbuda, Senkitz-Nevus, Saint Martin, Dominica, and Guadeloupe. What we need to do is start looking at the possibilities of developing transport links so that the trade between the, our economies can start supporting each other. And on top of that, when the trades start developing, so will the tourism between our islands. And that is what's going to build resilience for us going forward. If we're going to talk about having a sustainable future, then a sustainable future, we require that we work with our neighbors in order for us to all strengthen each other. Now, the idea is, yes, we're already in with Antigua and Barbuda, but we want to now extend the service down to Senkitz-Nevus. Just as regularly as we're doing with Antigua, we need to also look at the possibilities of extending the services down to Senkitz-Nevus. They themselves are also a transport hub. We have to look at the ways in which we could maximize what they're doing within the tourism industry and the way that they're connected to the international market. And also look at the possibility of linking directly into Saint Martin, where they themselves have shown great potential in their expansion by being linked to the international market. So in order to do that, the conversation must start now. And we will also need the necessary resources in order to start implementing small services that we could phase to larger services. So it's a phased approach. So we'll begin small and then we'll start grow the transport services to larger services that will eventually give us longer-term permanent connection to our neighbors. This would transpire into more regular and permanent connections to the international market that are dependable for our travelers and our tourists.
I see for example, and, and we've, I don't know if you've been listening to the committee over the past couple of days, where we have had a lot of discussion on Twin Auto. And you have highlighted the Twin Auto service here, right? I am not putting you in any particular position. I am using the document because that is what I have at this point. And so I won't, I may hazard, but I don't think you'd be afraid to say, well, if your Twin Auto does not materialize, where does that leave the strategy that you have set out here? And I see, for example, at page six, where we speak of the air, the air, the air connections between Saint Martin and, and the work you have done in, in making connections already with the personnel in Saint Martin Tourism Department. You have seen the possibilities. I don't know if you want to speak to that of day trip and excursions coming from Saint Martin. And again, I would, I could see that you're also seeing that persons would have another option of a transatlantic gateway as well. Okay, and you say we provide opportunity for tourists from Saint Martin to utilize short-stayover trips on Munsirat. And again, you're speaking to Guadeloupe, Senkitz, and Nevis if we maximize that type of aircraft use.
Okay, um, there's, there's a big difference in terms of what can be done in terms of aircraft type. If we were to be able to access a Twin Auto service, it would, it would, we could, we could clearly see the benefits of a Twin Auto going down to Saint, down to Saint Martin and us having local trading between Saint Martin. Saint Martin has already indicated that any amount of local goods that we could provide, they will accept. That's, that's the kind of potential that we're looking at. But a smaller aircraft to Saint Martin will not be seen as something that tourists would want to take. So for us to connect with someplace like Saint Martin, which is quite a distance away, ideally, a Twin Auto aircraft would suffice. But that does not mean that if we do not get the Twin Auto service, that we can't do other things because we can still access Senkitz-Nevus. We can still look at not only the island, the aircraft, building routes between those islands, but we can also now look at the possibility of building ferry routes between those islands. Now, where, where the conversation is currently on the table, where the, I think the World Bank is again considering looking at the possibility of a regional service. And even before we get to that point of a regional service, because a regional service is very complicated, we could start now looking at the possibility of developing our own ferry service between here, Senkitz-Nevus, because of the limited access that is currently available in terms of flight between here and Senkitz-Nevus and between Antigua and Senkitz-Nevus. So a ferry service coming via Senkitz to Nevis to Munsirat to Antigua would greatly improve the access just between our islands here as this, as this little small cluster. So it's not, all is not lost. If we don't get the Twin Auto, we still have other things that we could do.
Okay, um, you're coming in, go on, go on. All right, we also see, PS, please, please.
Just wanted to add in terms of the strategy to open up Saint Martin and Senkitz, that it's to source the appropriate high-performance aircraft that can allow us to materialize within the airport infrastructure limitations that we have. So as the access coordinator is saying, all is not lost around the specific aircraft type, but it's about the capability to allow us to open up additional international gateways by utilizing the permissible equipment that's approved to operate in and out of Munsirat.
But am I, is it fair to assume that while other options may be pursued, that your main focus or your preferred choice would be the Twin Auto? In that you've outlined larger capacity with low cost per passenger, that's what's outlined in your document, interline agreements with route ticketing and final destinations, access to global airline ticketing distribution, systems and online travel agencies such as Expedia and Booking dot com, better facilitation of mail. better facilitation of mail and courier services, improved viability for exporting agricultural projects, produce. These are outlined in your document, making the Twin Auto your preferred choice. And clearly, from what I'm reading, the islander, is it, are you saying that the islander may be able to provide some of these, address some of these aims that you have?
Yeah. So the approach that, that, that the division is looking at is not to completely omit the islander out of our plans going forward. What we're looking at is a partnership-type arrangement where we have both a Twin Auto and, and the islanders working together. Because there are some things that the Twin Autos could do that the islander can't and vice versa. So we want, we want to get that, as Mrs Castle said, we want to get the optimal, optimal mix of transport services. And the islanders are ideal for medivacs, they're ideal for charters, they're ideal for couriers, cargo services and that kind of thing. You know, the, the Twin Auto is ideal in terms of mass movement of, of, of passengers and longer journey times, that kind of thing. So we want to see how best we could map the two together to get the best solution for Monserrat.
If, if I may, okay, go ahead, please.
And just to reaffirm that we would have had that strategy study with the technical consultancies, the recommendation to introduce, so it's the Twin Auto performance capability aircraft having examined our current. So it was on that basis that we were building our strategy going forward. Yes.
Now, if I may, in your presentation earlier, Mr Lindsay, or access coordinator, you said there is presently an unavailability of flights. Could you explain what you mean by that?
Okay. So when, when, when the government of Monserrat decided to implement airline ticket subsidy, it reduced the, the ticket price from Antigua significantly. So we're now looking at just over $500 for a return journey to Antigua. This incentive has caused travel to increase significantly for the months for which the ticket subsidy has been implemented. And so what that means is if you, if you do not book early, you possibly would not be able to get on a flight for a week or sometimes up to two weeks because the flights are fully booked. And if you, if you happen to miss your service coming in or going out, there's a high possibility that you won't be able to get a flight within the next day or two to get, you know, out of Monserrat.
I don't know if you were listening on Monday, but Fly Monserrat presented a totally different picture in that I made the assumption or asked the question, and I got a totally different answer. And the reason why I'm asking this is if you're thinking of having Twin Autos and Islanders work together to address our capacity and our plans for whatever connections we want to make, isn't this a good time for both airlines to be working together to increase capacity, to address what you're outlining as the unavailability of flights?
The problem that we might have there is increased capacity. Now, yes, they might say they have capacity, but at the end of the day, can they actually increase capacity? We, yeah, I know they spoke about flying hours and they spoke about parts and maintenance, and all of this is quite true. They have to keep a very close check on their flying hours. They have to keep a very close check on their maintenance. And all of this affects how much capacity you can increase by. So if you are looking at increasing capacity and, and flying hours for, for your pilots are currently low, you can't because you have to maintain the flying hours in order to carry the customers that are already booked. Now, if you have to go off on the maintenance, again, you have another challenge because at the end of the day, once the, an aircraft is off and on maintenance, then again, you don't have the possibility of increasing capacity.
I have traveled to and from Antigua, so I'm aware of the problem. That's why I asked the question. What concerns me is that we need to get to the facts here. If indeed the airlines presently cannot cope with the demand, especially since there's a reduction in the fare, which is still not as low as what the ferry was. So are you saying, is it fair for me to assume that if the fares were to go down even lower, you might even have more demand? And if at this time, the demand is beyond the capacity of the airlines, then is that impeding the numbers that we're actually attracting to Monserrat? Whether for trade or for, for tourists or for whatever?
Yes, yes, you're correct. If the, if the, if the price goes low, it will certainly increase the demand for, for travel. I've had reports on persons who were trying to come here because the price had decreased. They wanted to come here for day tours or spend two nights, but because the flights were so booked, so fully booked, they weren't able to come. So we had to turn them back for that reason. And, and your next point was?
If you were to reduce the fare even more because the ferry costs less than the 500 you mentioned, would we have even greater activity?
Yes, we would, we would definitely have greater activity. But even though we have greater activity, it still, it still depends on a number of, of other factors.
So here we're talking about the potential to expand to Senketsu and Saint Martin and others. And we already have a potential to grow our number of visits presently over the past year since Covid. So Covid is no longer, is it fair to say that Covid is not the issue here?
No.
Nor is it the ferry? So how are we going to address this? And I know this is a question for the ministers more than you. And I don't want to, you know, you have to implement what's done.
Exactly. So, so we are preparing the options for, for the ministers to, to review. And once, once they get their head around that, then they'll let us know which, which options they prefer.
And before I hand over to the chair, I must then ask, you have weekly meetings, is it weekly? If it says so. It says we have, what is it? Regular meetings with you. You know, I don't know whether weekly or bi-weekly or monthly meetings over your access challenges so that they can support you in addressing the challenges you have. And I would assume provide more support if necessary to address it. Have these matters come up in your discussions with the FCDO? These concerns, this issue of lack of capacity and unavailability of flights?
In, in the past, we would have had regular meetings in terms of reference. For this year, not as regular. But I just wanted to backtrack because I got, understood you to indicate in terms of the, the potential. And we had shared earlier passenger movements from 2018 and 2019. And you see that those were in the order of 40,000, moving around 25,000 by sea and 15,000 per annum by air. And so this is where the access potential, with expanding the gateway and having that combination of both passenger ferry, air transport, small and medium-sized, larger, we could be in the 50,000 movements, 60,000. So it's basically how do we resource, provide the resourcing to allow us to have persons moving to and from Monserrat and to improve our economy?
Well, we'll get to this as we go along. But my main concern, I must say, at present is that we're facing the opportunity for greater numbers and we're not able to meet it. So we'll get to that in a bit. I'll let the chair continue.
Safe, reliable and sustainable for our strategy, our pillars. But what we have seen with the ticket pricing at this time is that it led to increased travel, so affordability. Would you say that is key? And I must admit, I've marked your paper and I've put an A between here for affordability. Yes? And we are seeing that materialize. And again, we'll come back to juxtapose with, with sea, with sea, with sea as well, that we, you, and I'm sure you would have looked at your market, looked at the statistics in determining that these are viable options for Monserrat economically as well. I, I, I don't want, I leave that other question for the political directorate to answer that I want to posit or ask about now. But I will not put you in that, that position. That would not be fair. That's another question, that's another question for you. So from what you're saying, we are seeing that there's social economic positive impacts that can be derived from, 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 from this type of arrangement. I just want to take us back because we have heard evidence as well on the interline arrangements and access to global airline ticketing distribution systems. Online travel agencies will significantly improve preference of Monserrat as a choice for the traveller. And in particular, the interline arrangements. Do you know much about that? We, it was shared that this can be costly as well as the challenges of passengers moving from the international airline and then getting on to one of our local operators. And how would that work? Have you looked at those challenges that may arise? And can you share your views on that so that we are able to have?
Okay. Interline arrangements are quite costly, as stated before. They're not very cheap. They range between 50 and 60,000 US a year. And for a small airline, that's going to be significant. But the benefits of interline arrangement far exceeds just booking directly from a larger country straight through to Monserrat. You have the possibility of through baggage, where you have less hassle and all this running around in, in the hub in order to get to Monserrat. We also have the possibility of automatic marketing through these booking engines. So as long as you put in Monserrat pops up or you put in a destination, as long as Monserrat comes up, we have that kind of marketing possibility as long as we're integrated with, with the international travel booking sites. So those are the benefits of having interline arrangements. The, a smaller operator who struggles with interline arrangements would be so because they would be making the kind of returns to cover that type of arrangement. So we now have to look at the possibility of, the possibilities of getting interline arrangements and what approaches are we going to use in order to be able to access that type of possibility? And there are some, you know? But on the other hand, we still have to look at the, the current operators that we have in place. They have done pretty well for us over the years. So, you know, the decision now is down to the government of Monserrat to decide how do they want to take that type of decision forward? So do they want to take a different approach to be able to accept interline arrangements? Or do we want to look at the possibility of working with the smaller operators to help them to get interline arrangement? Those are the options, yes. Yeah. So you either, yeah. So you either, yeah, you either work with them to obtain interline arrangements or you look at the possibility of working with a partner who already have interline arrangements. Those are the two options.
I will need to start over. Piggybacking on the question of working with operators. We, we, we know that Covid really hit the operators hard because travel, travel came to a standstill. And can you tell us therefore what support, maybe I could ask that was given to assist operators? And I refer to PS's statement that there are two types that of support government gives for, for travel. Can you explain that for us? The subsidy, and is there another one? I'm seeing operational support to Islander Service 2022, 2023. That's in the chart. Then the operational support to Islander Service. And, and that's where you're laying out an implementation plan. And then on 2024, 2025, operational support to Islander Service. You're still proposing that to continue. And then we go over to 2026, 2027, reduction of operational support to, well, that's the ferry operator as well. Can you explain the operational support that you're referring to? You're referring to, what does that entail?
So a monthly operational support is provided to the two current Islander airlines on the Monserrat-Antigua route. And you did indicate that travel ground to a halt April 2020, right after the Covid pandemic, that operational support we had been increased as a Covid lifeline support to ensure that we had access to and from Monserrat. Because even though we had a contract with the ferry, the ferry service was at a standstill and it was primarily air travel. And then the other support that we, in the non-peak months, to the travelers, but of course beneficial to the airlines, would be the ticket subsidy.
So, so how do you explain? Yeah. But, but on, on, on top of that would have been the increase in numbers. So even, even though it would be, it would have been support to the passenger, the increase in numbers would have benefited the operator as well. Because a lot, exactly. So, so remember, the operator doesn't lose any money but gains more money because of the increase in numbers. Even though the support goes to the customer, the additional travel, travel numbers in, in its, even though in its entirety would, the operator would actually gain financially a lot more because of the travel numbers increase.
A question which I don't want to claim I have the answer for. In your negotiations with the providers, by providing a subsidy which increases numbers that benefits them, is that not some leverage for you to influence the overall cost of the EFR fare?
Well, I, I'm, I'm not fully sure.
Let me put it another way. We have discovered that there's no regulator for EFRs. So the operators are getting what they ask for, clearly. And whether there's a subsidy or not, they get the full fare. I, I know that prior to this time, it was still difficult, even before the I know that prior to this time, it was still difficult, even before the subsidy was provided recently. It was quite difficult to get a flight at times. So the capacity issue is not just merely since the subsidy has come in. It has increased significantly. The demand has increased. I would agree. However, isn't there some way for government to influence the overall cost in negotiating and providing a subsidy to the airline?
That, that needs to be a decision that needs to be taken by cabinet. Yes, we do provide support, but at the end of the day, in terms of controlling the price of the ticket, then cabinet would have to make a determination on that.
I hope I didn't detract from what you were...
And, and that was done in the past in terms of negotiating and capping, capping the cost of travel. So potentially, yes.
Sorry, the provider also said they could handle 30,000 passengers in a year, which is far more than what we're handling now. Is that a fair statement? Or is there some way they can actually improve their service to provide for 30,000?
Right. I don't, I don't think it's correct for us to get into the details and in terms of what the provider said he can provide, yes or no. If he says he can provide it, then it's up to him to prove that. It's a little bit more technical than to just, you know, rebut, to say, no, he can't, or yes, he can for us. So we wouldn't be able to comment on that, unfortunately.
Let me put my question in a different way. The demand is greater now. It is greater now. The demand is there now. Are you challenging the provider to step up to increasing their capacity? Have you?
We've had conversations in terms of increased capacity. Most of the time, as I outlined before, it's down to two main reasons. It's either the flying hours or down to the fact that airplanes have to go for maintenance. So, and they have to go for regular maintenance now because of the increased capacity. So whereas before, if, if the maintenance was six weeks or two months, whatever, they now have to reduce the maintenance time because we're doing more flights to cover the current demand. So yes, they do struggle a bit with, with maintenance and in effect would struggle with capacity increase.
Wouldn't you need more maintenance with more flights?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. They have, the maintenance has now been pushed further, closer. So they have to go for more regular maintenance now than before. So that, that now affects the capacity issue.
And in terms of challenging the operating environment with daytime flying from 6:00 to 6:00. So in terms of those numbers and the practicality, what we would have seen is that the data from 2005 into 2010, where you had the Twin Otter and the Islander operating, then you had movements in the order of 30,000. So that's what the data is showing.
Could you please repeat that?
Trying to find the actual... Right. So we would have gotten information from the airport division in terms of passenger movements. I'm not referencing the 2006, but certainly in 2007 and 2008, the movements by the Twin Otter and the Islander Services would have had in the order of 30,000 per year.
For some reason, between whom?
2007, 2008.
Between which providers?
Both the Twin Otter and Islander Services.
Continue, please.
So about the capacity, we're not in a position to say specifically, as the access coordinator was saying, is that the operator would need to provide a plan within all of the other limitations with flying hours, airport operating hours. We're not currently facilitating night, night operations.
Access coordinator, you referred earlier to the fact that you have emails and correspondences from persons seeking to come in, having difficulty. Would you kindly provide any of those, some of those correspondences so we can have the evidence?
Yeah, we do have some emails in terms of people trying to get into Monswat, but a lot of our information comes from verbal as well. A lot of people don't actually send emails. They will call in or they'll WhatsApp to say, well, this is, these are their challenges. But we do have some stakeholders that we speak to on a regular basis that give us feedback as to the current situation.
Would you kindly provide whatever you can?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Yes, continuing to page eight that these would see. Or before I get there, another, another aspect that you highlighted that would benefit from us having the Twin Otter service would be for agricultural produce. So we see another socioeconomic opportunity as well. And you spoke of lettuce, for example, and, and the market that we can, we can develop between, between that. Yes, I wanted to highlight that. So just, just on this transportation and back to the Akila or Quila Aviation with access strategy in 2019, recommended that the government of Monswat owns a vessel either through direct purchase or lease purchase option. And this will be complemented with a separate operating contract which provides crew and maintenance. And this operation or this recommendation was outlined, some benefits for the government of Monswat, but only the government of Monswat could get the management systems right, it's in entirety. The management of such a high cost asset presents its own set of challenges, typical of transportation, transport operations. But against the far-reaching socioeconomic impact of ferry operation and projected day tripers demand, we are looking at government, where we now, 2023? We're introducing passenger ferry services around October to December 2023. You have that as well. I've given you quite a bit to speak to. And of course, we know that is subject to, I'll let you answer for yourself. I won't answer for you. Okay, so we have the Akila Aviation, and that has been a point of discussion. As we say, we're looking at access options. You may not, if you can, please. That was, that was suggested in that, in that consultancy. And that's at page eight. I'm looking at, at page eight. And when we go over to, to define, review of strategy for sea and air access, it stresses, it again stresses, and it actually calls them lifeline ferre routes. And that is at page 15. So I'm not making it up. I've, I've read the documents. I'm still reading. Yes? Can you speak to that at this point? Or have you had any thoughts on it? Is it in the document? Because the, the suggestion from, from the access strategy completed by Akila Aviation in 2019 recommended that the government of Monswat owns a vessel either through direct purchase or a lease purchase option. It however, highlighted that this will be complemented with a separate operating contract which provides the crew and maintenance. It's in the document, so can you share with us on that point?
Now, the key there is, in the, in the strategy document is if government of Monswat can get it right. That's the key for that, for that paragraph that we have to pay attention to.
Can get what?
Can get it right in terms, in terms of having their own vessel. At the bottom of the paragraph, it said, it said, if government of Monswat could get it right? Or something like that? Okay, so the key there is, is that final point. Now, buying a vessel is not particularly difficult. And that is very key to whether or not we should have our own, our own vessel. Now, I've, now I've had a significant look at the possibility of us having or owning our own vessel. And, and the report is correct. The challenges are significant. And I must say that we would have a lot of work to do and a lot of resources to implement in terms of having our own vessel. I got the experience when I was working with Jaiden Sun. They did a lot of work in terms of maintaining their vessel. And it is clear that if it wasn't a privately owned vessel, the government of Monswat would probably struggle to upkeep that vessel.
Well, very good point. May I ask the question then? We spoke all of your public-private partnership. And a period of training and assessing one's ability to, to manage and take care of a ferry. But public-private partnership is always available. So wouldn't public-private partnership over ownership with, with a ferry? And wouldn't that address practically all of your aims and, and plans for, for trade, for opening new routes, for improving your connectivity with Antigua and the works? Wouldn't that assist reducing costs? The seasonal, seasonal use of the ferry? Wouldn't all of that be more in control by the government of Monswat?
Yeah, that is correct, but remember, that hasn't been decided yet. That has to be a decision made by cabinet as to whether or not they want to go down the road of a public-private partnership. The best we could do is put the necessary recommendations on the table in terms of how they can do it, what are the benefits of it, what are the challenges that they will have? And hopefully, we can come to a solution moving forward.
With fairness, you have said that in your last paragraph on page eight, that the approach is to like the Twin Otter service facilitation to establish a public-private partnership arrangement with operational support to the passenger ferry operator. And you will have annual reviews and medium reviews, et cetera, to ensure that, that, that is working. Just on the issue before I, I move away from, from C. We have currently a bimonthly cargo service. Is that working for, for Monswat? And, and what are the challenges in terms of mail and in terms of the supplies? That, that medical supplies and as well as for, for our stakeholders?
So the bimonthly service, we actually started off with a weekly service. And we recognized that the weekly service wasn't really viable because of the level of cargo that we were bringing in from Antigua. We ideally wanted to improve the service so that we have just as much cargo coming in as we have cargo going out, but we're still working on that. The bimonthly service though has grown significantly from the time we've started in November 21 until now. It has now become one of those things that is a dependent. So we are looking at if we don't have it, all of the challenges that we're going to face from not being able to access certain things coming out of Antigua. So we have both the mail, we have the courier services. We also have the medical equipment and supplies. We have the fuel that comes in for M V O. And we also have quite a lot of equipment that come down now for the port development. So there's a lot of stuff. And then we also have groceries. We have stuff that comes in for the supermarkets. And we have personal people who brings in stuff for themselves. So there's quite a vast range of customers that we supply coming in from Antigua.
Just to add, there's the flexibility during December and March to operate a weekly service based on demand.
Question, if I may, Madam Chair. With the unavailability of flights, the lack of capacity of the airlines to address merely passenger service, they can't even keep up with the baggage demand as, you know, we realized, as you've stated. I guess that further increases the need for sea access, for cargo access. Wouldn't there be naturally a move to increase the services from bi-weekly to weekly at least?
Well, we still, because it's a supported service, we still have to manage how much we put into the service compared to the overall performance of the service. So, you know, our job is to have proper management systems in place and we have to justify how much we're putting in compared to how much we're producing. So at the moment, I don't think we're at the level where we can move to a weekly service. But if it does grow to that level, we will look at that possibility.
Is, is it not a chicken and egg? I mean, do you, do you offer the opportunity? Isn't the demand there? I mean, mail services, not just monthly mail, mail that comes and packages that come for short-term delivery. You have food that you can't wait, long for. You have a range of items that the port may need something this week, next week. Wouldn't weekly freight probably open the door for, for more activity with freight? Especially since EA cannot address it?
Right. So I do understand where you're coming from in terms of, you know. But we have to also look at the, the fact that we do have a number of other services that bring stuff into Monswat. So this cargo service is just a small portion of all of the freight, all of the mail, all of the courier services that comes, the airlines bring courier services. The, we have a vessel every week, two vessels a week that brings courier services. They also bring food for the supermarkets. So, you know, the, the capacity is not really there for us to expand to a weekly just yet. It may do in, in the future, but at this time, when we do our review, because we have to review, we review every quarter on the service to see if it's performing well and what we could do to tweak, it's not making that level.
My last question, and I'm going to be very direct. Is it a question of money? Are you trying to manage with what you have? Is it, I need, you need to be very frank for us to understand and to make proper recommendations. We need to be clear.
Correct. Well, for the cargo service itself, it's not about money. It's just about performance for now.
And in, in actuality, there were weekly trips and it underperformed. And as I had indicated earlier, during the peak times, when the demand is there, the, the service is provided on a weekly basis. So there's that element of flexibility.
I want to introduce...
Let me just...
Go ahead.
We would like to have some documentation to illustrate how the service is performing and whether, you know, what recommendations we can, we can put forward in, in respect of that service. And just following up, has it impacted mail coming into Monswat?
Yes, it has, mainly during like the Black Friday sales, the Christmas period. But in the Christmas period, what we do, we align the service to be, to be in conjunction with Christmas itself. And we'd go to a weekly service during Christmas just to accommodate. During the year, yes, it does affect the mail because we, we're not just dealing with mail that comes from Antigua. We're dealing with mails that come from the international market. And they sometimes have some delays and some logistical challenges coming from, from Miami coming into Antigua. And that in itself, if it misses our service this week, then it might be another two weeks before it gets here. So we have those type of challenges, no fault of our own, but at the end of the day, they're there.
If you can please provide the information of how it's performing. The other providers that are in the market and the challenges. For the cargo, for the cargo element, I I think we. Ideally. You would have. And I've shared with you already the rules. And I recognize as well. But ideally. Ferry service into Monstra, seasonal, all year. What are what 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 is the better option? And if you have the documentation to support that, we would want to see which which option. Because remember, we're looking at access and we spoke of the challenges we face at this time. I also see where in the the I the review of strategy for sea and air access. Where they spoke to the alternative, the alternating of a smaller ship during the summer months. Where the water, the climatic change is different. And the winter months where we have a large number of persons to move to and from Monstra. And the waters, they describe quite clearly, I understand, yellow, yellow hole and what happens there where a bigger ship. Might be required and whether such considerations. I know it's a review from twenty seventeen, but the waters haven't changed. I also know that we are moving into the port, the new port development. We haven't asked you about that one yet, but perhaps you can. Or unless you want to hold my questions and I'm going to want to ask you, if you can, with all the plans that we have. Looked at the land side development of of the of the port and the the other elements of the port. I suppose we can. For the port manager and and government. But in terms of your role in stimulating the economy and so forth, the the land side element. So I've given you quite a bit. So maybe start from the land side element and then end us on the the option, most viable option that you with all your research. And if you have the information to support that, the evidence, we would be happy to have that as well. Okay?
We haven't even touched on regulatory issues and laws yet. But I must ask the question. If at present we have unavailability of flights, this is what month? September. What do you anticipate will take place in December coming? And how are we going to address the increased demand? That we wish to take place in December, how are we going to address that?
Right, so currently in our present, in our earlier presentation, we did highlight that we are working on. Short term passenger ferry service. It has not been fully confirmed yet, but we still we're working on it. We should know, hopefully, within the next month or so.
Within what?
The next month. Yeah, so if all goes well, we should be able to have something in in December. If we don't, for whatever reason, then we'll have to look at the ways in which we could address the the challenges that we will face.
I believe this committee would like to know now what the alternatives will be to having a ferry in December. I know it's a tough question, but what will the alternative be?
If we don't have a.
Yes, correct. By now, in September, people should have known that there's a ferry since August, July. So they could plan and purchase tickets, tickets will cost more money. They'll be going to other places instead of Monstra.
Right.
Already knowing that they can't, we can't cope with the access now.
Fair enough.
If they're trying to book, they may book and get flights and then we can get in and out of Monstra. So we need to know now. Exactly where you are with regards to preparing a ferry, what the hindrances you have are. And what the alternatives should that fare be?
So. If we're not able to to get a ferry in December, what we'll have to do is sit and consult with the current airline operators. And see how best we could work with them to manage the influx of passengers. It has been done before. The passenger numbers for December is not the same as the passenger numbers for March. Usually, before Covid, the passenger numbers were around fifteen hundred. For December time and in the region of three, three thousand five to four thousand for March. So the airlines typically on a month can manage between both of them. One of them manages around twelve hundred a month on a regular basis. And the other one is about nine hundred to a thousand a month. If you add on an additional fifteen hundred to that, they'll probably have to double their services. But they usually are not able to, but at least they will try their best to see how best they could increase their capacity. Again, it boils down to see if if they're able to get in additional pilots. If they can't, then they will be restricted with flying hours. If not, they would have to prepare their aircrafts ahead of time, the best that they could to manage the the influx. And that's the best that could be done.
You asked specifically where we are in terms of the short term ferry service. So as indicated earlier, we received two bids. In a few days, we expect a vessel to be inspected for approval for the passenger ferry service. And once that vessel, having responded to the open bid. The Honorable Premier would be in a position to see we have identified a vessel to operate on from early November. After that, it means that you would have to do direct sourcing. So we would have gone through the route of an open market engagement process. And if the outcome is unfavorable, we hope not, then you would have to explore other options, which would be direct sourcing. Approaching an operator, do you have a ferry? Can you come in if it's seasonal for December and March? Or it could be continuously December to March? So it's in stages, as we said before, and we are all agreeing, this needs to happen months before. So we should have been at this position in April, but we went to the market, received the bids only in early, early August. So as soon as we had that information, the premier would be on the air and it would be on the online platforms.
Well, this committee cannot change the circumstance, nor can anybody change the fact that we're where we are now. However, I'm a bit confused by the response from the access coordinator. Because a while ago, I was asking, can the airlines handle more than what they have? I got a different answer. Well, maybe I am not hearing correctly. I asked you if you're challenging the airlines to be able to increase their capacity. I don't know if you remember your answer, but your answer this time is that there are ways, it's been done before. So I'd like to know from you, since it's been done before, which airlines? And how are you going to get increased capacity by year? Should they see the the proposals for the the efforts for getting a ferry fare? How, tell me what airlines, tell me how these airlines are going to cope with handling the numbers you just mentioned. Because you said it's been done before. Tell me, please.
So now the. When we spoke before and I said about increased capacity, there's a big difference between increased capacity immediate and increased capacity. With the required amount of lead time. Yeah, big, major, major difference. So now. An airline cannot increase capacity for next week if they have challenges with airline hours this week. You see the difference? If if you, if if we say tomorrow or next week or whenever in October. Yeah, that we're not going to have a ferry for December. It gives them enough time to make the necessary improvements to try their best to increase their capacity. That's the difference.
You you're still confusing me. Because right now, we have a greater demand than we can handle.
Yes.
And hold on, and it's been going on for a while.
Right.
And I can't get an answer as to whether it's being addressed now. Clearly, it's not.
Right.
So if the demand now, which is. Far less than what Christmas will be.
Right.
Is not being addressed.
Okay.
Perhaps you can tell me how it's going to be addressed next week or two weeks from now.
So let me give you an example. Right, so an airline has increased capacity for the last two months or three months. Yeah, so an airline has increased capacity for the last two months or three months. But that is not capacity that you can see coming, correct? Because of the because of the because of the airline ticket subsidy. So why would an airline go and get an additional pilot so that they could increase their hours if they cannot see? The cap, the capacity that they'll need coming. If you can see the capacity that you need coming for December, you'll go now and try and secure a pilot. That's the difference, that's the example. Yeah?
If I may, no, I'm not stopping. And perhaps it refers back to the operators saying if they have a policy and they understand where we are going. Then they can plan to meet our 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 needs. So you you are you saying that because the the subsidy has given rise? And we'll have to look at it to see if it will continue. Because it has given rise to increase travel and whether the subsidy also will continue. The airline also needs to know that, are you saying? Before it will go and expend its resources to to to. Provide the necessary capacity building that we need in month for for that period. However, if you gave them lead time and they know that we're expecting about fifteen hundred persons. Who need to get into Monstra between festival, declaration of festival and just about January, one more thirty to first of. First couple of weeks in in January, they can then plan whether to bring in more planes, get pilots, et cetera. That is that what you're trying to explain? The difference between then and and now?
Yeah, so it's 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 almost impossible to have anticipated how much the change of in terms of capacity that would be needed for airline ticket subsidy. There's no way of seeing that. With an with an with a, how should I say? With the experience of having December festival, it is it is a little bit better for them to anticipate. What it would look like and what they might need for 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 that type of event. So there is two different, it's two different playing fields.
And we also take into account. Thank you. And we also take into account the subsidy lasts until when?
Thirty first of October.
Okay, again, another factor the the operators would perhaps want to consider in in investing more. Is that what you're saying? Am I correct?
Well, they'll just have to manage the ticket subsidy until the thirty first of October. You know, they're not sure who is going to fly and when they're going to fly. They didn't have any lead time for them to have pre bookings and that kind of thing. So it was difficult for them. For December, it's a little bit different. You know, if they put on a flight today and it's full by the end of the week, they could put on, they could look at putting on another one.
So people planning to book for Christmas, November, what price will they be paying if they book right now?
No idea.
No, if there's no subsidy, what would the airline be telling the passenger?
The the airline has a number of peak time fares. We usually have to check with them to see what their fares are, their fares, their fares changes all the time.
But wouldn't that fare be minus a subsidy that does not exist right now?
That's correct, yes.
So the passengers will be paying the subsidy.
Yeah, the additional, the additional.
Passengers will be paying the subsidy in absence of government deciding on a subsidy beyond October. That is serious. And it has happened last year and before. So maybe we should, I don't know, Madam Chair, because I'm tempted to begin to ask questions about November last.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, I I allow.
Okay, last year, November, you produced this document. Shortly after that, we had a serious challenge on Ireland, as you mentioned yourself in your presentation. With the absence of a ferry and twin auto services as well. Could you tell us at the time when this document was published? What governments' plans were to address both sea and access for last year December?
December twenty twenty two. The private sector had endeavored to introduce a ferry service. And that came to a halt belatedly. And so the access division, we sought to provide that service. For for December twenty twenty two. Our efforts did not materialize and needn't repeat the requirements, the lead time and all that's involved. And similarly, even for the service in March, it did not provide what we consider to be an adequate lead time. We had just short of three months to start looking at the March service. We would have engaged with about four, four operators. And eventually secured the service for March into April.
Could you tell us what your challenges were as of November last year? Regarding providing sea and air access. Sea access being by ferry and air access, which would have been the support of. Twin Otters in the absence of ferry services as we normally would have it.
So by sea, you would have been finding a ferry operator who had a vessel. That would meet the requirements for passenger travel between the Antigua-Monstra route. To be able to deploy that asset, given the short, short time, the short notice period to commence operation. And it's also for the operator, the short period of service. We were asking for a thirty day service. So it means that you would have had a short notice period to mobilize and demobilize within a thirty day period.
Were there any other factors affecting acquiring a ferry or air access through Twin Otters?
In terms of the air access, typically, we would have had, as as the demand required, twin auto performance capability service. And the service provider had notified of their unavailability at that time.
In November?
I think it was around that time. Right, that was December twenty twenty two.
Well, I'm referring to November.
Air services in November?
Surely you'd have been seeking to get the the services of the Twin Auto. I'm referring to Winia, which airline are you referring to?
So we would have been seeking to get additional airlift.
Correct.
The Twin Auto Service for the mid-December into mid-January period.
And that would have been sought before November?
That would have been sought before November for implementation around mid-December.
So what were your difficulties in obtaining a twin auto?
So just indicated around mid-December, the operator notified they weren't able to meet the charter requirements at that time.
Prior to December, uh, an organization called MACG actually, um, had arranged charter flights with the same company, Winia. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
You're aware of that, right?
Yes, we are.
And, um, how come they were able to, to procure those services when government couldn't?
Um, that organization perhaps were offering services prior to mid, mid-December.
Okay.
The GOM's led, um, services were from the middle of December.
But, so the airline was available to MACG right into December? And you're saying it was not available to you?
GOM had not requisitioned the services before mid-December.
Before mid-December, okay. No, no, I'm getting a better picture. And, um, it was Winia that said it couldn't provide the services. Would you give me a date for when you requisitioned the services of Winia, please?
Um, that we cannot give immediately, but we can provide subsequently.
I'd like to know.
Yes.
Because there, there seem to be some challenges as of December twelve, was it? With Twin Otter Services?
Our communication of the inability to meet our charter services was received on the thirteenth of December.
Thirteenth of December, right around the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, interesting. And did they offer a reason why?
Until further notice, um, there was a communication that the operator had, um, received.
From?
From AC, Air Safety Support International.
Could you, for the record, tell us what that letter, the date and from whom it was and what it was about, please?
So this letter was, um, dated the thirteenth of December twenty twenty-two. And it was from the Chief Operating Officer, Justin Rotwell, around Monstrat Airport matters.
Okay, and how did you obtain that letter?
So this communication was sent to us via, um, email.
From?
From the Director of Marketing and Sales, Winia.
Winia, so you got it from Winia? Okay. Wonderful. Um, regarding the ferry, um, what were your challenges apart from, um, obtaining somebody for a short term? Apart from, you know, whether you had to single source or not procurement procedures that you may have had to use? Were there any other impediments to obtaining a ferry for the December season last year? Were there no, were there any regulatory issues that came up regarding the ferry? And the type of ferry?
I think the issues are standard, as we said, is the, um, there are those requirements for certification and approval of, of the equipment on both the seaside and on the airside.
Was there any change in the requirement for a ferry that serves us between twenty nineteen and early twenty twenty, when the ferry was serving us, and December, when you tried to obtain a ferry? Were there any changes in requirements, regulations, anything at all?
No, there was no changes in requirements. The requirements will have always been the same.
So the ferries that operated, and particularly the Jaden Sun, prior to this for several years, you're saying that it would have made the requirements if it were to apply or seek to, to, um, win the bid?
I, I couldn't say as such. Um, the, the challenge that, that, that you would have there is, um, Solus is a year-to-year requirement that, that you have to maintain. And the key word here is to maintain. Not all operators do maintain the Solus requirements. Sometimes they, they move back to the lesser requirement, which is the Small Commercial Vessel Code. So if Jaden, if Jaden Sun had gone back to the Small Commercial Vessel Code, then no, they would not be able to meet the requirement now.
Please explain that, I'm, I'm a little confused.
Right, so there's, there's, there's two main, um, codes, um, but vessel requirements that we use within the region. There are those, there are variations. There's a Small Commercial Vessel Code and then there's the Solus Standard.
Okay.
Yeah, the Solus Standard is more intense, it's more in-depth. And it's, it costs a lot more to maintain that service level requirement. The Small Commercial Vessel Code is a lesser code. That doesn't mean that it's too restrictive on safety, but at the end of the day, it doesn't have to, um, go into all the different, um, uh, requirements as the Solus would. So now you said, you asked if, if Jaden would have applied in December of last year, if they would have met the requirements? And I'm saying is if they had gone back to, if they did not maintain their Solus requirement, which they had with us when they were here in twenty nineteen, and they had gone back to the, um, small, um, Small Commercial Vessel Code, then if they had applied with that code, they would not have met the requirement now.
To re-al alleviate the ifs and get to something factual, did they present themselves as, uh, a candidate for securing the ferry services in December?
Yes, they did.
And did they qualify?
That wasn't down to us, that was down to the Port Authority.
But you would know certainly. You would know whether, in the end, the port certified the vessel or not?
We never got back a response to say that they qualified.
You've never got back a response from the port?
To say that they qualified.
Or did, or were disqualified?
Correct.
Did you get any response of Jaden Sun?
Not in terms of qualification. We had, um, discussions up until they had produced their certificates to the port. That's what's it.
You had nothing invited from them to...
Your mic, your mic is not answered.
I was asking, you had any indication from Jaden Sun that they were no longer pursuing the contract with you to secure their services for December? And reasons for not wanting to? Is December where we refer you to, right?
Mm-hmm.
They were March, but I can't, I can't re-
They were not in the December?
No, no, no. Um, and I can't remember the final, um, the final communications of that.
And were there any other vessels who, um, applied for the, the December period?
No, it wasn't, uh, any other vessel. We, we had, we had gone out for, for direct, um, for direct sourcing. Uh, so, yeah, sorry. We had gone out for direct sourcing and they were one of the, um, the operators which we contacted. We contacted, I think it was five different, um, operators in, in our direct sourcing attempt.
Would you be able to name those operators? Please?
So we had, um, the Deluxe. We also, and the Deluxe was from Anguilla, we had Excellence. Um, they're also from Anguilla. And we had the Diamond One. And we also contacted, um, Jaden Sun and, um, Captain Hodge out of the BVI.
And were any of those vessels available?
Oh, and the V two V as well, from Mexico.
Were, were those vessels available?
All were available, but, um, they all had challenges, uh, meeting the requirement.
Were any of those vessels in the smaller category that you mentioned? Or what was it? You had, you said there are two categories?
Yeah.
Solus and the other is?
Is Small Commercial Vessel Code.
Did any of them qualify as small vessels?
All of them were Small Commercial, Commercial Vessel Code, if, if my memory serves me correctly.
So none of them were Solus?
No.
Including the Jaden Sun?
Well, from what I saw, um, I think they were Small Commercial Vessel. They had no need to be, to be Solus anyway, because they were currently running their local waters.
And, um, so there was no challenge in meeting the Solus requirements for those ferries?
Repeat, please?
Since they were small vessels, are you saying there was no challenge to them to meet the Solus requirements?
No, no, there's a difference between the Small Commercial Vessel Code and small vessels.
So tell me, tell me.
So, uh, the small vessels, I think, is under twenty-four meters. Um, I think most of them were, were, not most of them, some of them were over the twenty-four meter limit.
So what's the difference with those under twenty-four and over twenty-four as far as qualifying? Or what do they have to qualify for depending on size?
This is a better question for the port manager.
I know you, you should be able to answer it, but please give me your best answer.
Right, so for, for those under the twenty-four meters, then the, the qualification is not as rigorous. Um, for those who are over the twenty-four meters, then in order to run international waters, they should meet the Solus standards.
Which of those vessels, uh, are the preferred vessels, um, for the Government of Monstrat for access? When you're addressing safe, reliable and sustainable access? Which of those?
It's not about having the preferred vessel, it's about having a vessel that qualifies to the Solus standard.
Okay, and there's some specifications given when you're procuring a ferry that we've agreed to as a minimum standard over the years. Could you tell us what those requirements are?
Yeah, so the, um, the Aquila Report had outlined that, uh, we should look at vessels twenty-five meters and over.
Twenty-five meters and over?
Correct.
Can you tell us why?
Uh, so that they're able to navigate the challenging waters outside of Monstrat.
So vessels over twenty-five meters are better able to navigate the waters? Does not, does that mean that they're safer to travel on? For passengers?
No, it means that the ride would be a lot more comfortable. That doesn't mean that it's safer. Uh, most vessels go through a safety standard and usually don't get certified unless they pass those safety standards.
Are you saying there's no issue in, with regards to the ability to take the waters and, um, and, and, and safety? There's no connection between able to, um, handle the waters and safety?
It depends on how well you're able to handle the seas as a person. Um, a lot of these vessels have a lot of safety equipment on them.
Safety equipment as far as what?
As in terms of, um, their life vests, their fire suppression system, you know, these kind of things. There's a lo- long list of stuff.
I'm not referring to safety after it sinks. Or, I'm asking about safety, um, while it's serving the customer, while it's carrying the customer.
That's not safety, that's comfort.
That's comfort?
That is comfort. Correct.
Not safety?
No, so if a vessel is smaller and the ride is rougher, it's called comfort. Safety comes down to loss of life, injury, that kind of thing.
The likelihood for a vessel to fail in waters, these rough waters, is it greater for the smaller vessel or the vessel above twenty-five meters?
It's not, no.
I didn't hear that.
It's not, no. So the size of the vessel doesn't, does not dictate whether the vessel fails, yes or no? It is, it depends on the quality of the vessel and how well the vessel is maintained.
Okay, thank you very much. So you're saying the, the, okay. As far as the quality of ride, how does the quality of ride compare in the vessel under twenty-five meters and the one above twenty-five meters for passengers traveling to Antigua?
I would not be able to answer, I have never traveled in a vessel under twenty-five meters. But, but yes, I would have gotten some reports back and yes, it is a bit of a rough ride.
Could you explain the difference in your reports coming from people?
Yes, well, one person mentioned the washing machine. Um, the other said it was something, they were being tossed about. Somebody else said that they got wet all the way through, you know. It's these kind of reports for the smaller vessels. Uh, for the larger vessels, then it's, it's a lot better. They're, they're more enclosed, um, and, and, you know, it goes a lot more smoothly.
Okay. So you're saying you face no regulatory issues or challenges with regards to ferry procurement? Um, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and your main concern, um, in choosing a vessel is about comfort and not safety with regards to vessel under twenty-five or over twenty-five meters?
No, that's not what I said.
I want to be clear.
Yes, so let me be clear. Um, so, uh, if we're going to look at the possibility of traversing tourists to and from Monstrat, then we want to make sure that the vessel has a level of comfort that would satisfy the market and would, um, help us to grow our tourism market. But at no point will we accept the fact that if that vessel is unsafe, that we will accept it.
And how about, that's a little different what I'm asking, but we'll leave it at that. How about, um, local passengers and or diaspora people coming back? Are the diaspora tourists, but what about every passenger, not just the tourist?
The same standard applies to them. Thank you.
I just wanted you to say it so everybody could hear. I wouldn't want them to, I wouldn't want them to think otherwise. Okay, so I'm helping you there. Okay, wonderful. Um, yes, um, is there anything else you want to ask?
Go on, go on, go on, please, I'm allowing you.
Okay, so we were speaking about December. Now we've moved to March this year, St Patrick's time. And of course, we would have had more time.
Just, just, did you capture the?
Mike?
Did you capture what they shared? Is it captured the challenges passengers would have, would have indicated?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay. So if you, if you have any written form, we'd want to see the challenges that were shared with you.
I will send what I have, yes.
So we had a short period to get the, the, um, December matter result. How about the March challenge? Which is where you get greater numbers of tourists and visitors and local movement? Passenger movement. Let us know what transpired as far as your acquiring ferry services or Twin Otter Services.
I will let Mrs Castle start on that one and then I'll finish on it.
Okay.
So it was still a relatively, um, short period to acquire those, um, services. And we would have reached out to a shortlist of potential ferry operators um, that the Access Coordinator, um, indicated before. And so those interests, we would, um, outline, it's for a short period, the thirty day period and the certification, um, requirements. So you had to go through that, um, approval of the vessel and to make sure that they were, had the appropriate certification for the crew.
Surely you would have had that list from December of available vessels? Did you reach out to that list for March?
Yes, I know wider, longer.
And more?
Yeah.
And how many, um, indicated their availability?
Um, so we were actively engaging, um, with the operator from December and the additional four.
Okay. So from December to January, February, you were reaching out. How successful were those attempts to conclude with that contract?
So the, um, successful was the, um, contract that we made with the operator from Anguilla.
There were no other vessels that made themselves available?
As we had indicated, we were in, um, contact with four plus one.
We are reliably informed. We are reliably informed, and this is no secret, that the Jaden Sun was in discussion with you over a contract prior to March. Is that correct?
As we indicated, that was one of the um operators in contact with us.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so um as Mrs Castle said, yes, we were in contact. But everything um is based on whether or not they passed the, the certification requirement.
And so this time, did they pass it?
As I indicated before, we hadn't gotten a response back from the port to say that they had passed, no.
You indicated that in December, you didn't get a response, this is now March?
No, 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 they, they, we engaged them in March, we didn't engage them in December.
Okay.
December was when we had the, the Salem Committee and the private sector venture.
And you didn't get an answer back from the Port Authority as to whether the vessel was certified or not? And that affected your ability to contract the ferry, is that what you're saying?
It's a combination of certification and port state inspection requirements. As I mentioned, even the vessels that we have identified for this period? The inspection is due to take place um next week, early next week. And it's on that basis of certification of vessel crew and port state inspection? That um the access division would be signaled approval? So that we can enter into contractual arrangements for the ferry service.
To avoid rumor and confusion, I think this committee needs to be clear? On whether the vessel was certified? If not certified, why? And um also what efforts were made? Once you didn't get an answer from Monsport Authority as to the certification? What was done to make sure you, surely that was essential? To know whether it's certified or not? So is that above your pay grade or something, I, could you tell us?
I was going to come in to ask, to ask that. And if you could outline for us the, the steps, the steps that are taken? And perhaps that would give us clarity in coming into an arrangement with a ferry service operator. What steps do you take after you've entered into discussions with them before you actually sign off the contract? We hear that lead time is an issue and so we've taken that into account. So now you're now in conversation with someone. In, in, in this case, you're speaking about the Jaden Sun, um, in the March, March scenario. So explain to us what steps and who, who is responsible for doing what? So we know where to, who to ask, as he says, somebody that's above your pay grade? Or let me be frank, if it's the port who has to come to tell us how that works? How does it work between yourself, the port and the operator? Who is responsible for indicating and for doing what? So it's clear.
The steps, the Montrat Maritime Administration under the Montrat Port Authority? Would um conduct the approval process for a passenger service. So that includes verification of the certi- the, the certificates for the vessel? Certificates for the crew and also inspection of, of the vessel. The Port Authority would also work along with the other, or main um destination in Antigua? The Port State Authority for any additional inspection requirements. From the access division, once a vessel is approved for servicing over route? Then the access division, we are the procuring entity. So we would sign off a contract for an agreed sum and agreed service levels? Whether you're going to operate five days a week, single trip, multiple trips? The main route, doing um weekend excursions, day tours, all of those are requirements. And the um procuring would be done by the access division. Similarly, on the air side, the airport authority would approve um an islander service? A twin otter performance capability aircraft? And once they have the necessary approval to service, then the access division? Whether we are doing um a charter service or we are doing regular services? Those contractual agreements and of course payment to the service provider that is handled by, by our office. So the technical matters around approving the equipment for operation rests with the requisite um ports.
Who communicates the approval?
The approval of the equipment?
Of the, of the, of the operator? After whether it's from the port, how, how, how does that work?
The port manager or the airport manager?
So it is the port manager or the airport manager would communicate that to yourselves and to the operator as well?
Yes, well, the operator has to secure that because if they're not approved? Then their services would not be available for us to enter into.
But who bears the responsibility for communicating certification approval to the access team, who?
The airport authority or the seaport authority?
And not, not the operators themselves? You expect to get that from them directly, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
So it's communicated from the port authority to the um operator and also us.
Okay, so it's simultaneous, yeah, both, both, okay.
So that communication will come to us.
And both entities, the port and the airport management and whatever? Have permanent secretaries, the government involved um in the administration of those? Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So if you had any difficulty getting information, surely you could get it via those sources? Should there be any difficulty?
We, we have not experienced difficulties that we need to bring in um senior management involvement.
So it was not important?
They are internal stakeholders, so we are in direct communication with the Port Authority? And we're also in direct communication with the airport.
That leads me to ask a very serious question. Where did the governor's office come into all of this?
I'm not clear.
Did the governor's office get involved in any way? Over your actions to procure a ferry or twin otter? Over the Christmas to March period just past? Were you in communication with the governor over these matters at any point? The governor never called your office, never emailed you about your efforts to procure a ferry or a twin otter?
The, the, the communication with the governor's office would be at the level of the premier? To give, you know, general updates on our intention to, you know, have, have the um either air or sea transport services in place? But in terms of from the, us at the technical level, communicating directly with the governor's office?
That clears up a lot, so there was no communication with you at your level um with the governor's office? Very good, we need to clear that up because it's, it's been asked of me. The other question I need to ask, and it's a even more serious question? Um, did the Honorable Premier in any way give instructions regarding the procurement of ferries? Between that time when in your efforts to procure a ferry? Any instructions given to you regarding your choice of ferries or which, anything at all?
Instructions in relation to choice of ferries? We engage, we, we're just down the corridor with the premier very regularly. We would have to give sort of ball by ball updates how we are progressing. Um, in December, as we said, it was into March direct sourcing as opposed to the open bid process.
So there were not?
Not instructions to select a ferry because the process is? The port's officials, air or seaport would have to approve the um vessel or the aircraft to operate? Before we can legitimately enter into any contractual arrangements with um a service provider.
So there were no instructions from the premier? Um, hindering the choice of ferries approached? Um, for them to present their qualifications and to you and the procurement? Uh, in, in the procurement of a ferry or the certification of a ferry?
No.
No instructions? I, I didn't hear that.
No honorable Romeo?
Thank you, thank you, I just wanted to be sure. So the public can hear, that's why I, I want to clear all rumors and talk. This is the point where we speak, you know, and I'm hoping that you feel confident to speak. Um, i- it's not an easy thing to do for a public servant, I'm fully aware. But um I have not addressed this.
I addressed, I addressed them in the moment.
Yeah, no, not just that.
They have a difficulty like us, that they can revert back to the.
Yes.
The, the institutions.
Yes.
Parliament.
I have a very serious concern for the confidence public servants will have in coming before a committee? Or any um body um to speak truth that may not um be kindly taken by those in authority? And in this instance, this exercise will be futile if you are not able to speak the truth? On technical, straightforward, factual matters so that we can make good decisions. And so whether it is, is Don Romeo while he was premier? Or whatever, I'm expecting you to state the facts and let them fall where they may. This is not about PDM or MCAP or whoever. It's, it's for us to really resolve a serious matter that's affecting Montrat access. Critical matter, critical matter uh to, to, to going forward. So I just wanted to make that clear. So I asked those questions, I know they're difficult ones to answer. And um just wanted to thank you for being open and responding.
They didn't tell you they were difficult?
No, 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 no. Um, yes, is there anything else you wanted to ask?
Please go on, go on, I didn't stop.
Yes, so regarding the procurement, you then eventually chose a ferry? Um, how did that ferry qualify? What size of ferry it was, which ferry was that? And um how come you ended up with that specific ferry?
So as we um indicated, we had been in communication and were going through the process of getting the vessel approved. The vessel selected was approved for um, for the service.
Which vessel? We need to get the name of the vessel, the size of the vessel, so it's clear where the, the vessel.
The first one was Jaden Sun?
Fit? Your mic is not on, my dear.
The first vessel we were dealing with was Jaden Sun? And then that, we didn't get any certification for? I just want to make sure we're, yeah, so we're now on to another vessel, okay?
So that was the MV, MV Deluxe?
The MV Deluxe, and where is that ferry from?
It's from um Anguilla.
And Mr Lindsay, could you tell us the size of that ferry? And um, and the necessary information with regards to its certification and, and what was required?
So you, you required the size and? Right, well, I have here, it said sixteen point six four metres for that ferry. Um, the certification, uh, because it's under the twenty four metres, it would not have required the solar standard. Um, the certification went, I don't actually have the certification, it went directly to the port manager. And then it would have also had gone directly to.
Could you repeat that, sorry?
Yeah, I would, I did not get the certification for that vessel.
Did you need to get it?
Well, I usually get the certification for the vessels. But we were in a bit of a rush and it went directly to the port manager.
Okay, yes.
And um the, that would have also been transferred to the, to ADAMS, which is the Antigua Maritime Authority also.
So the MV Deluxe was approved, certified? But it was of the smaller size below the twenty five metre that's been recommended for our waters?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't approved straight away. Um, it went from Anguilla to Antigua. And the Antigua Maritime Authority did their, their inspection on it, they had a couple of issues? And they resolved those issues with the Deluxe? And after that, it was um approved to be used here.
So we end up with a ferry that's under twenty five metres, sixteen metres?
Hmm.
Um, it carries how many passengers?
Ninety seven.
Ninety seven? And um. The best way for me to ask the question, we'll get the same answer. Would you procure that ferry again? Would you get the services of that ferry again? Based on its performance with regards to comfort and the responses from customers? This is not about safety now because you said they're comparable when it comes to safety. You have no issue in comparison. But as far as comfort, would the Government of Montrat? Based on what you've presented to us in this and other documents? As far as your commitment to the reliability? Sustainability, safety, comfort I hope is part of it, of customers? Um, attracting more people to our shores? Um, addressing the numbers who would want to travel to Montrat? Who would have to decide now that? We have two, two blockages? Getting seats on the access and planning now? And planning to travel by ferry, which tends to be preferred at Christmas time? Because, because of the numbers and affordability cost? Um, tell me, would you secure that ferry again?
The decision is not down to me to, to secure a ferry. My job is to do facilitation. Now, the decision is, is down to whether or not the Government of Montrat? In conjunction with the Monsport Authority approves that vessel? If they approve that vessel, I will put it into, to operation.
Would you recommend the vessel?
Nah, this, this is getting personal now.
No, 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 no. No, no, forgive me.
No, my personal, that's not, that's, my personal opinion is not for the forum.
I'm not, I'm not asking for personal opinion, I'm asking for professional opinion. Based on what transpired last time coming from your customers? Based on what you want to offer the public, okay? Because they're going to blame you anyway as being part of the decision making. Uh, so I'm asking from a professional point, standpoint? Um, whether the access division would be comfortably recommending that vessel? And that, would there be a huge effort to find another? Um, that's my question, if it's, if you consider it personally, you can answer it, you're free not to. But I'm, I'm making the question anyway.
Yes, I'm going to pass on that question, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, we'll, we'll pass, we speak to the um more relevant persons. Um, so then lastly, there's clearly a challenge with regards to obtaining adequate air access? Within a week or two for the public to know? And sea access for the Christmas season? You also have the present challenge of the availability of seats between now and then. And um, I, I want to be clear that um our job is merely? To be able to advise and recommend to the entire assembly? How we might want to avoid um this circumstance which seems to be repeating itself? And also to, along with that recommendation? Um, highlight the importance of the FCDO? And the Government of Montrat working together to fix this situation once and for all? And um with that, I just want to thank you for appearing for us today. And we look forward to receiving the information that you will provide us. You have a question?
No, they have one still to answer.
Madam Chair, please proceed.
Yes, you have, you have questions to answer for me? You remember?
Um, do you mind refreshing quickly?
All right, I want to speak to the option. We have seen the struggle to procure a vessel even with lead time. And we now want to look at seasonal and all year. You may need to provide us with some more information given. But at this, having gone through this process for a number of years, how long have you been working with access? Six plus years. And PS, same time or you're a little shorter? A little shorter. Seasonal, long-term challenges, benefits in the procurement? Because it's a procurement, once you have your procurement and the certification, we are ready to move forward. So given those factors, because in our recommendation and the data to support, if you can give now, we'd appreciate further recall and then you can follow up with writing on that one.
So just in a nutshell, to reemphasize that the sea transport would be in addition to the air modalities. So we are recommending the combination. What we found is that the seasonal option presents a number of challenges to source a suitable vessel. And it's usually very, very expensive. Whereas a year round, you would secure better travel confidence, traveler confidence because you're aware a ferry service is available from January to December. It also has the opportunities for day tours, excursions, definitely increased seat capacity and it's suited for certain travel demographics. There are some persons who need to pop over to Monserrat quickly. So the air 20-minute ride is more suitable versus a 60 to a 90-minute ride by a ferry. With the year round, you have a stronger possibility of better pricing because you're mobilizing, demobilizing over a longer period. So you can spread those costs.
And we're talking better pricing in our procurement negotiations?
That's correct. As we said, that's going to be a very intense discussion with the policy directorate. But it's not only year round, but it's the configuration, whether it's be government-led or we're working with the private sector and providing operational support. So that's like a public-private partnership arrangement with operational support or other incentives. So that the private sector does the end-to-end service. They receive the revenue as opposed to government collecting passenger fares.
Have we done any consultation as to the cost? We have been heard over the years during procurement contractually as opposed to if we were to, as suggested by Akila, procure your vessel and then get a management system in place? Have we ever done that exploration?
We didn't go directly for the costs, but as part of the consultancy, estimates were made and for the current operation with the government-led, we do have those operational costs.
Yeah, those are. Please.
Just one question because you said the cost for short-term procurement of the ferry is quite high. How does it compare to the yearly cost? Can you give us an idea?
It's difficult to give a factor because then we're not always comparing apples and oranges. So we may have a price for short-term for 97 seater versus 350 seater or 240 seater. But per unit price, because you're mobilizing, demobilizing quickly, maybe curtailing your existing service to respond to ours. So all of those costs would be transferred to us as the.
PS, I could be far more specific. However, I know you would want to have the question, which we will pose to you in writing.
If Madam Chair agrees.
And to get some more exact figures, because we would have figures for what it costs.
We'll be happy to do that.
I'm not going to put you on the spot here.
And I might not be able to quote them exactly.
Correct, correct. And of course, with your procurement process, we don't want to interfere with any confidentiality that may exist, if they exist.
We thank you for that sensitivity because it does exist with other potential businesses in the future.
We'd like to have that discussion. If you can give us percentages or figures, whatever is preferable.
What's the word? Because we have recommendations, so what do we recommend?
Anything else?
At this point? I'm so sorry. Let me start from the top. I want to thank you again, reiterating what Honorable Romeo has said for coming this morning and presenting to us so ably. We recognize the challenges and one of the elements of this committee arose out of what happened Christmas and St. Patrick's. So it's critical that we get the information that you will have in order for us to make recommendation as to how to address that issue. We already seen, even though you have started, we are still cutting it close into, as we say, confidence in the route, which we need to build if we're going to be able to develop a strong, strong access, strong access route, policy sector. And one, again, you have stressed the importance of, as though we want comfort, safety and reliable. And we didn't get the sustainable, I think. But you, I know in your presentations to DFCDO, you will have to show how it's sustainable. And we would be happy for information to show the sustainability of the options that we may want to consider. Because it's the option that we consider that we determine the sustainability, whether the short-term is sustainable, seasonally sustainable or all year and the economic issues. Yes?
Yeah, we keep saying all year, but we have to now start thinking about the three to five-year plan, especially for access. Yes, a year-to-year for recurrent stuff, recurrent items, we think government should work. But when you're dealing with the travel industry, you have to start looking at the three to five-year plan because that's how the rest of the world is doing their planning. And in order for us to integrate with them, we have to start now adjusting ourselves to start adapting to that kind of thought process. Now, a three to five-year plan would allow for a year in advance planning and give us the time to review and tweak services before we get to the next year. But we would have to get that three to five-year financial commitment to assure that we could move to the following years' planning without delay or without uncertainty. On top of that, not just the three to five-year planning, we have to also consider the other departments within government which access works alongside that requires additional three to five-year planning, i.e. tourism, the tourism division and the Monserrat Arts Council, all of which has to work alongside the access division for their planning of events and need that year in advance financial commitment for them to be able to put their events in place. So it's a little bit bigger than the year-to-year and really hoping that one of the recommendations would be for us to push a little bit harder for a three to five-year commitment for these departments so that we can get access right.
You're just going home. Excellent, yes, thank you so much. When I say year, I mean rolling over. Because you know we do our things rolling over. Yes, so hence my thinking of year. But you have said it quite, 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 quite well. It's a three to five-year, again, building confidence in Monserrat as a country and people, as the operators were saying, they need to know so they can invest. Nobody is going to be putting money in here, be it external investors or our local investors without knowing that we have that transport. And we did not even touch, again, the volcanic situation. But we can always get back to that or some other department in terms of emergency evacuation that was also mentioned in here. But what, yes, I've read, we have, yeah, you gave us a lot of reading to do. But we can take it from here and add it to the discussion. But that also arose in our final report. It says, "Review of Strategy for Sea and Air Access, February 2017." And I'm reading many of the challenges that were pointed out still exist today. So I think it's still apt, something we can still use to. Okay, and any other documentation you think that the committee would consider? And these also will go as part of the reports. The persons will be able to access them to read them. I don't think you've given us any secret documents. And if so, you will indicate so that we will know because there's provision for some things on the committee rules. So once again, thank you so much. Thank you to everyone. Thank you to our listeners virtually and via radio Monserrat. For those who are present with us, thank you for Mr. Ogaro, who has waited. And we will resume at 2:15 after the lunchtime break. Thanks again to everyone, the secretariat and our technical support here. Have a good lunch.